Good evening, everyone. I'm Council President Nick Mosby, Chairman of, well, President of Baltimore City Council. Tonight, I'm going to chair the committee as a whole. We're going to meet this evening to host our very first quarterly community forum of the Consent Decree Monitoring Team. Also joining me tonight is Councilman Glover, Chairwoman McCray, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Burnett, Councilwoman Porter, Chairman Stokes, Councilman Cohen, and Chairman Schleifer of the Baltimore City Council. From my office, we have Nikki Thompson, as well as will be joined by Aaron DeGraffinwright, and Matt Stegman is on. The mayor's office, we have Natasha Mayhew and Mia Themelis. The committee staff person today is Mr. Larry Reed. Joining us this evening are members of the team charged with the oversight of the federal consent decree related to reforms of the Baltimore City Police Department. The Consent Decree Monitoring Team reached out to the council and asked that this forum be set up to update the public on their important work. The members of the monitoring team include Mr. Ken Thompson, the monitor, Mr. Seth Rosenthal, deputy monitor, Commissioner Charles Ramsey, principal deputy monitor, Chief Hassan Aiden, deputy monitor, Deputy Commissioner Nola Joyce, Sean Smoot, and last but not least, Dr. Randolph Dupont. And we'll start with a presentation from the monitoring team to move to any questions that we have from members of the council. Following that, we'll hear from members of the public. After all speakers are finished testifying, we will ask for those questions or concerns. At this point, I'm going to yield the floor over to the monitoring team. We can't hear you if someone's speaking from the monitoring team. We see you, but we can't hear you. See you waving.
Mr. President, just wanted to let you know I'm here.
Thank you. While we get our audio straight, I see that we have also Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman Ryan Dorsey is also joining.
Press star six.
This is what you're. Councilman, can you hear us now?
We can hear you loud and clear. I yield the floor.
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mr. President. Let me, I got a few preliminaries that I have to make clear. You guys sit as a party to this case, so we can't take questions from the council unless you guys have counsel present. You need to have a lawyer there. But we can certainly take questions from the public. I'm sorry that was not explained to you guys ahead of time, but because you have your parties to this case along with BPD, you're represented by the city solicitor's office. And so it would be unethical for us, especially Seth and I, who are lawyers, and Sean, to take questions or to answer questions from you guys. So hopefully, that's not going to cause too much of a problem, but that's unfortunately the lay of the land.
Totally understand, Mr. Thompson. We'll try to remedy that, but you can begin your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We would like to spend some time this evening updating the public in terms of where we are with the consent decree as of, and I would say as of today. It's been a rather long process. We actually began our work in February of 2018. And when we began our work, it was obvious to us from the beginning that BPD was in pretty bad shape. Its training facilities were poor. Its training curriculum was poor. The technology was poor. Internal Affairs, it was under a different name in those days. It's PIB now, was clearly dysfunctional. And so we made a decision early on that it was clearly, it was obviously important for us to work with DOJ and to provide technical assistance to the department to try to get them to a point where at some point in time we could assess that. We spent from, I would say, from February of 2018 to the early part of 2021, providing what's called technical advice. And around that time, I think those of us on the monitoring began to feel that we had done a pretty good job of bringing the department up to speed. But more importantly, the judge pretty much told us point blank that he expected at some point in time for us to begin the work of monitoring, which means he wanted us to begin assessing where BPD is or was, because at some point, you know, he wants to make a decision in terms of whether they should be, whether they should come out from under the consent decree. So I think it's fair to say that this year, we did a pivot. And while we will still provide some technical advice to the city and BPD, our primary focus over the next few years will be on assessments. And so that's what we're going to talk about tonight. I want to introduce members of my team first, and then I'm going to begin the presentation on some select subjects. So next to me is Nola Joyce. And next to Ms. Joyce is Hassan Aiden. Next to Hassan would be Chief Chuck Ramsey. Randy DePont, raise your hand. We have Ms. Wanda, of course, who set this up. Sean Smoot and Seth Rosenthal. What I'd like to do this evening is to talk about six areas that we hear a lot of questions from, or we get a lot of questions about. They would be assessments, behavioral crisis issues, community policing, staffing, misconduct, and supervision. So let me start by asking Seth Rosenthal to discuss the process of assessment. So Chuck, I mean Seth, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thanks, Ken. Good evening, everybody. Good to have you all, and thank you for welcoming us to this forum. Ken was just talking about how this year represents a pivot for the monitoring team. For the first several years, we've been advising BPD on their policies. We've been helping them draft training curriculum. We have been monitoring them along the way. You know, we have been taking a look at their policy writing capacity and monitoring the quality of their new policies. We've been taking a look at their curriculum writing abilities and monitoring the new curriculum. We've also been observing training to assess how the training is going. But now, we're at a point where, because most of the policies, new policies are in place, and because officers have been trained on most of those new policies, we now need to assess whether BPD and all the different areas of the consent decree is actually making progress, whether where it's, is it making progress on use of force, or its misconduct or internal investigations better? Is it arresting people with the proper legal justification? Is it stopping people with the proper legal justification? Is it stopping, arresting, searching people without regard to race? Those are the types of things that we, as monitors, need to assess in order for the court to determine whether BPD can get out from under the order, the court order it is currently under. We have done some informal assessments in some of these areas to date. For instance, a year ago, or a little over a year ago, we published our first comprehensive assessment of internal investigations, the quality of internal investigations. There, we took a look at the quality of internal investigations back in 2018, which was before the reforms in policies and procedures in the Public Integrity Bureau were adopted and before investigators in the Public Integrity Bureau or detectives in the Public Integrity Bureau were trained. What we found was unsurprising. The quality of those investigations was poor. The decisions that the Public Integrity Bureau reached after conducting their investigations were not always well reasoned and were not always defensible. The quality of the files there were poor. And so, you know, that sort of set a baseline for us in terms of misconduct investigations. Later this year, we're going to be taking a look under the hood to determine whether the new policies and procedures and the training that investigators have undergone in the Public Integrity Bureau has actually made a difference. We're going to be taking a look at investigations that the Public Integrity Bureau has conducted in the wake of training to determine whether those policies, procedures, and training have made a difference. So that's one area we'll be conducting an assessment later this year. But we're already conducting certain assessments in certain areas beyond misconduct investigations. We're conducting our first comprehensive qualitative review of use of force. And so we're taking a look at a representative sample of use of force cases from the last three full years, 2018, 2019, and 2020. And we're reviewing use of force reports. We're reviewing, we're reviewing body worn camera footage, and we're making determination in each of those cases whether the use of force complied with policy and complied with law. We're also taking a look at use of force reporting, whether officers were adequately reporting their uses of force. Finally, we're taking a look at supervisory review of use of force to make sure that supervisors were doing what they were supposed to do when they were reviewing these force incidents and drawing the right conclusions about whether force was proper or not. So that's one big thing we have undergoing now. I am not going to get into too much detail, but we'll certainly answer questions about all the other assessments that are going to be underway in the coming months. But they include assessments about the quality of sex assault investigations, the quality of training, whether arrests are being made with proper justification. What am I missing here? Looking around the table.
Implementation of community policing.
Yes, or the implementation of community policing and a couple of other areas. But in each area of the consent decree, we are going to be evaluating whether BPD is, in fact, complying with the new policies and the new training that they have in place. And that is what will ultimately determine whether they reach compliance with the requirements of the consent decree and whether they obtain the goals of consent decree, which are constitutional, community-oriented policing.
Thank you, Seth. As I indicated when I first spoke to you, we selected essentially six areas that we get a lot of questions about. And one area that we get a lot of inquiries about has to do with police intervening with people who have behavioral issues or in behavior or in crisis. We have with us tonight Dr. Randy DePont. And so Dr. DePont or Randy, as I call him, would you talk a little bit about that area and what's going on and update the public?
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the invitation from the members of the city council and appreciate the public joining us as well. I want to talk a little bit about what the goal of the consent decree is when it comes to issues that involve individuals with disabilities or individuals who are struggling in a behavioral crisis. Our goal there was to start by improving the strategy and the skills that are available through the Baltimore Police Department and their ability to respond. But then, we also took a look and asked the question of what are the gaps in the mental health system and social service system in Baltimore that perhaps can make a difference in which the city can have a role to make big changes? And now, what we're doing is also moving to where we're looking at the things that the city are proposing to try to make some significant changes in the system so that we have support for the police that they need. The result will be a decreased need for police presence and an increased ability of the community to respond to the needs of its own citizens. So we're very pleased with the progress so far in that area. In order to accomplish that, we have revised the policies that the police have done, and they've done a good job of this. They did so by having a community committee that provides very strong advice and that they take it quite seriously and has followed the advice that they have provided. It's allowed them to revise their crisis policies. It's allowed them to change their access for reasonable accommodations for individuals. It's allowed them to change the way that dispatch responds as to the calls that come in. We think that those policies have been very impressive, but not only that, it has led to an improvement in training that we are really getting good feedback from the officers on. We have spent training, training all officers, especially those that are just starting with the department. But every officer has received at least eight to 16 hours of training a year and will continue to receive a great deal of training. We also have asked officers to volunteer and step forward and let us know they want to be leaders in this area. And we've given them an additional level of training that goes even beyond what the other officers have received. And that training is underway and doing quite well. We're very pleased with the feedback that we're getting. Despite the pandemic, we've been able to continue with that and do quite well. What this has led to though is I think that something's very important for Baltimore. Baltimore is developing a system of diversion that will occur at the 911 level, that will allow individuals to be brought to the proper level of care that they need and not always have to respond to a police response, but sometimes allows us, many times will allow us to have a strong community response, such as involved with the Crisis Mobile Team or other individual service providers that will be able to respond. That's an impressive thing that they're undertaking, and this is being undertaken in a very systematic way that I think is protective of the public, make sure that there's public safety, but also make sure that the public is getting the healthcare needs that they need from your EMS service. So when we combine that, we have a really strong potential for change here. One of the things we did at the beginning was to get a firm to come in and tell us what the gaps were and to tell the city what the gaps were. And the response of the city has been very strong. What they've done is to develop a plan to meet the recommendations of the gap analysis and to provide with a set of solutions that will address those issues over this year and the next years to come. I think that's really left us in a position to move to the kind of assessment that you heard Seth Rosenthal talk about, where we can kind of look at the data. We've already got preliminary data that's very encouraging. When we look at things like arrest rates, that they're very, that they're very low. When we look at other issues about increase in the use of public, community resources, those are going very well as well, indeed, as well. So I'm really pleased with where we are. We still have a good deal to go, but I'm impressed with the commitment that BPD has made, that the public has made to do that. And I should add, many of the trainings that take place are done by many of the community professionals here, some of who have lived experience and many of whom are also professionals in the community who are volunteering their time to come and make a difference in your life, and I'm really impressed with that and the fact that they're doing that without charge to the city. That, again, I think is something that we're really pleased with. And as we move to firming up the outcome data, we'll be able to kind of make a report with you all on the kind of success that we are anticipating. So I want to thank you for that opportunity. Ken?
So, Mr. President, at this point, let me open the floor for questions from the public, in case someone has some questions before we go too far into the presentation. We'll take some questions now. Now, you can always ask questions at any point. I think it just makes sense to break it up a little bit. So if there are any questions, we'll take them now on these two areas or any other question you might have.
The president has left. I think he's probably trying to get on in another, on his phone. And I don't see the vice president, so I hope nobody minds that I stepped in here. Mr. Green, can you call some of the members of the public and see if they have questions?
Councilmember Ramos, I did also want to note that General Counsel Aaron DeGraffinwright has joined, and so hopefully, that should remedy the previous issue of needing to have counsel present in order for the council members to ask questions.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, council lady.
Thank you very much.
If anyone is interested from the public in asking a question, could you please raise your hand? Bob, you have a question with the committee?
Mr. Green, do you have somebody in the attendees that want to speak?
Okay, Khalid, dearest, I guess, that's your last name. Sorry if I messed it up. Do you have a question?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I typed in the chat. I don't know if it's seen, but I was just curious as someone that's, you know, I read through the DOJ report and the consent decree. And you know, the report outlines some pretty horrific crimes that go back for many years against the public, but BPD was not asked to admit fault, and they specifically deny the allegations. So I kind of wonder how that plays into the process and how the public can be, you know, clear that they're going to change if they specifically deny they've done anything wrong.
I'll take a crack at that now. Let you guys. The consent decree is a court order. And it doesn't really matter how the parties got to that point. At the end of the day, BPD, the city, and DOJ entered into an agreement where even though there were no admissions, based on the conduct that DOJ found, at least that they alleged existed, the consent decree was designed to address those issues as though they were true. So what I would say to you, sir, is that the consent decree, really, it's not a question of fault. It's a question of fixing problems that I think everyone agrees existed at the time. And the consent decree is designed to address those problems, and that's why it has like 500 and some different paragraphs that address a number of different areas. So, I mean, I think that's the easiest answer that I can provide you. I don't know whether Seth or anyone else has anything to add.
All right. I just, you know, it kind of strikes me as someone who's a criminal defense attorney. I know it's not the same process, but a member of the public that's accused of something, if they were to refuse to admit to the allegations, they wouldn't be able to plead, and they'd be punished for it by the judge. So I don't know. It just seems to me that I don't know how BPD can be bought into the process when they specifically deny they've done anything wrong.
Well, again, I've answered the question as best I can. It's an agreement that, this is a civil case. It was an agreement entered into between the parties. The judge listened to the remedy or the remedies that were in hand. The parties agreed to abide by those remedies. And so, you know, from the monitoring perspective, our job is to look forward and to make certain that the city and BPD comply with the, you know, pretty much in total with the requirements of the consent decree.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of the Consent Decree Monitoring Team, our lawyer is here, Aaron DeGraffinwright. So if there aren't any other public questions at the moment, we're going to open it up to council questions.
Council lady, more people, some more attendees. If you give me a minute, I could go through this list.
Perfect, okay. Just wanted to let them know that we had our lawyer here. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. All right, the next person is. Marva Donaway, you have a question, comment?
Madam, councilperson, maybe what we can do in order to get through the agenda, why don't we move on? And we'll always take questions throughout the course of this evening, but let me.
Hold on one minute. We're going to see if there's anybody else at this point. Hold on one minute.
Okay.
Paul Jay, you have a question, comment? Okay. That's it.
All right, let me move to Chief Ramsey.
I just want to check this real quick since we opened it up. If any of our council members have questions at this point? I don't see any hands, so go ahead.
I just, I'll let Chief Ramsey discuss community policing.
Thank you. Good evening. Last year, 2020 into early 2021, the monitoring team provided technical assistance to the BPD to develop curriculum that would be used for community policing training, the initial community policing training. The training was two days, focusing on the community policing plan that the department developed and released earlier this year. And also, policing of lesser offenses was part of it as well. That training was completed last Thursday. There are a few people who missed the training, so there is some makeup sessions that will be taking place, but for the most part, it's done. We will begin the process of consent decree calls for the department to provide eight hours of training annually. So we will begin the process of working with them again to develop that curriculum for what that training will look like. And then later in 2022 and into 2023, should be in a position to be actually begin the assessment of how well they're implementing community policing. One of the issues that's going to come up later in discussion is going to be staffing. Staffing is an issue that we are concerned about, but we certainly will be doing everything we can to work with the department.
Sir, speak a lot about power and some of the solutions that you have to address the issue. But my thought is always that.
Can you mute yourself, please?
So is that a question or what?
We just had an interruption. No big deal. Keep going.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. But that's pretty much where we are right now with the community policing. Again, the training has been completed. We will begin working on the in-service training that will take place in 2022. And then we'll begin our assessment of how well they're implementing their community policing plan. That should start in late 2022 and into 2023 for the actual assessment.
Thank you, Chuck. Let me move, Councilwoman, to staffing. I'll ask Ms. Joyce to discuss that.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. And thank you for allowing us to share where we're at with the Baltimore Police Department. Staffing underscores everything, basically, for the consent decree, because without staffing, you're not going to be able to do the work. The Police Department has released a staffing study, a staffing plan, and then just recently, the first part of this year, updated that staffing plan. The staffing plan reflects the required number of officers to meet the workload and the demands of the consent decree. It also reflects the desire to offload work from sworn, both through increasing the number of civilians within the Police Department, so that jobs which do not require an officer, that is, do not require a gun or a badge to do, they're looking at civilianizing. It also reflects offloading some additional work, such as the ones described by Randy on the mental health, also traffic accidents, for example, having other means of handling that, burglar alarms, et cetera, and additional calls. All of those efforts helps reduce the workload required by sworn, so you can address workload either by hiring more people or reducing the work required and focusing that work on things such as community policing that Chuck just talked about. Staffing is certainly still an issue. The Police Department has been working as much as difficult it is to recruit these days, to increase the number of sworn hires. That has been a challenge, not only for Baltimore, but across the country for a variety of reasons. And we continue to work with the Police Department in reviewing their recruiting efforts as well as their retention efforts. Keeping officers onboard is as important as hiring new officers. So that work continues, and we will continue to monitor how well they do both in recruiting, retention, and hiring.
One of the overarching goals of the consent decree is really to rebuild or to build trust, or some level of trust between the community and the Police Department. And from the DOJ report and from just anecdotal evidence, it was clear that the department lacked a tremendous amount of trust with the community for a variety of reasons. And one of those reasons had to do with the fact that the community has believed for a number of years that police are never held accountable when they commit violations either of the law or policy. And so one of the areas that is extremely important from the consent decree's perspective and the monitoring team's perspective is to address that issue. So I'm going to ask one of my deputies, Hassan Aiden, to discuss internal affairs or the, what's now called Public Integrity Bureau, but this is the Accountability Division of the department. So Hassan, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, members of council. Good evening, members of the community.
Good evening, members of council, good evening, members of the community. You've heard Seth Rosenthal talk about some of the assessments that are underway in Internal Affairs or the Public Integrity Bureau. I'm going to sort of bring you up to speed from the beginning of our work to where we are today. So we started with basic building blocks and rebuilding that infrastructure. And we worked with the parties, the United States Department of Justice, and the city, and the BPD, to start at the very basics, rebuilding the policies, rebuilding the processes involved in accountability in the police department. And beyond that, and as we were building that, those structures, we also addressed, you know, sort of the big elephant in the room, none of the investigators had ever been trained to do very sensitive internal investigations, arguably some of the most intensive and difficult investigations in policing. Those are the ones that where the police investigate themselves. So we started a, we undertook a huge effort to build a Public Integrity Bureau manual to support the training that really took the investigative steps, broke them down, and categorized and prioritized the process of investigating a police case. That took a number of years to do, but the outcome of that was one of the most progressive and comprehensive manuals and policies for investigators to follow in the country. As soon as we finished that, we started to build a training based on that and based on best practices and emerging practices. That also took a number of years, but it was done sort of in unison with other activities as they were ongoing. That training was delivered in April of 2021, and it was really well received. It was so well received that not only did the BPD train itself, but members of Baltimore County Police and other neighboring police agencies came and sat through days of this training for themselves as well. So with the completion of that, we began the process of sort of testing cases. So what we'll do on a bi-weekly basis with the Department of Justice is we'll randomly pull Internal Affairs cases and examine those cases for quality and to ensure that it's actually progressing. And it is. Evidence shows that the investigations are improving, they're more effective, and they're much more professional. So in the next few months, we will be doing an assessment that will use the same instrument that we used in 2018 to do that assessment, and compare the two post-manual governance, essentially, and post-training. So that's the biggest update. There's a component of staffing in this area, and they were extremely low-staffed, which meant that all of the untrained investigators had huge caseloads. There was no chance of getting it right. Now, the staffing has increased exponentially with the training, with the governance, these cases are getting better and much more effective, which is the desired outcome for the community.
Thank you, Hassan. So PIB deals with officers who have crossed the line. You would want a system, however, in place that would at least put a guardrail around the process so that officers would have some supervision so that perhaps they wouldn't commit an offense or violate a policy in the first place. And so I'm going to ask Sean Smooth to talk a little bit about supervision.
Thank you, Ken. Good evening, city council members and members of the public, it's a pleasure to be with you. The monitoring team and through the consent decree process over the past few years has made a very significant amount of changes. And frankly, the department has made significant changes in terms of supervision. And I would say it's really, some of these changes have been disruptive within the department in terms of changing the culture and really integrating procedural justice into the entire department's ecosystem. Let me tell you what I mean when I say that. The department actually started, and I commend Commissioner Harrison for bringing these changes to the fore, but really started changing the way it selected supervisors and created a system that helped to identify the best candidates for promotion, set actual criteria for promotion, and provided access for officers to seek promotion that didn't exist before within the Baltimore Police Department. That's the procedural justice that I'm talking about. And frankly, I think we all agree that procedural justice should be the foundation, cornerstone for every police department. We learned early on in this process through focus groups and other surveys, talking to officers, a real frustration that existed within the department in terms of opportunities to promote, opportunities to seek assignment to other positions within the department, maybe that weren't promotions, but that would lead to opportunities to engage in leadership and one day be promoted. And the fact that there really wasn't a set process in place that was transparent. And that has all changed. And those changes, I think, have been noticed by the officers in a very significant and important way. This impacts the ecosystem of the department in a number of different ways, not the least of which is retention, because one of the, one of the things that was pointed out through our research and focus grouping with officers in the department was, one of the chief reasons for job dissatisfaction was the idea that there wasn't a transparent process in terms of how supervisors were selected. Now, in addition to that, the department is now doing a significant amount of performance evaluation of supervisors. It's training supervisors to do performance evaluation of their subordinates. These are things that frankly weren't done, if they were done at all, they weren't done well within the department until recently. That created a problem in terms of accountability, which is another area that you've heard about, and certainly we will continue to work with the department on. But it also resulted in missed opportunities for supervisors to actually mentor their subordinates, which is another key facet for retaining good officers. They want to be mentored by supervisors. They want to have that access to experience and leadership to improve themselves professionally and hopefully to improve themselves in a career. And all of these issues are interrelated. And so as we continue to work, as we continue to move forward, we have been collaborating with the department, developing supervisor training, which will be very good. We anticipate that supervisor training will be implemented in the first quarter of next year. We will assist the department by assessing its efficacy. And moving forward, you know, we expect to see very good things come out of that training. And as the department continues to evolve, we expect to see, continue to see excellent candidates promoted and get access to promotions. So thank you.
Listen, we'll take questions.
If you could keep going, then we'll, we need to just keep going, and then we'll ask our questions at the end.
That's, that's, that really is our presentation. We expect to get some questions, I mean, we can talk about some other things.
Okay, sure, I thought you had more, but that's, that sounds good.
Councilwoman Ramos, there's a question in the chat from Mr. Kareem Madiris.
My question was answered already, or the one I put in the chat.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, appreciate that. Councilmember Burnett? We're going to take questions from our council members, so Councilmember Burnett, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the consent decree folks as well for this helpful presentation tonight. The question I have related to the staffing study and overall requirements that have been set out for the department to be adequately staffed, can you do a deeper dive into what those requirements are, how they were determined, is in the number of officers needed? And the reason I'm asking that is, I remember the Public Safety Committee, and we've had numerous hearings with the police commissioner in which we've asked this exact question, how many officers do we need? And at no point have we been given a very clear answer as to what the exact number is. So could you elaborate a little bit more on what you're requiring of the department to achieve?
Yes, so the staffing study and the staffing plan consisted of a workload analysis, first for patrol division, our bureau. That was based on the number of calls for service, how much time it typically took for each type of call for service, so that gives you an idea of the amount of time required to respond to a call, and how many calls there were of that type. It also took into account things like relief factor, so that's days off, that's training days, that could be medical days, et cetera, and also the shift requirements as reflected in the agreement with the union. That was for patrol. And then what the consultants did for the non-patrol units was to, again, try to estimate the amount of work required for like the detectives, so how many homicide cases, how long it took to investigate a homicide case, sexual assault, property crimes, et cetera. And then there were administrative units that had staffing requirements. They, the consultant crunched all those numbers. And the staffing study at that point said that, hang on, let me get to my number, roughly the department requires, there it is, requires 2,785 sworn members to meet the current, the workload, plus, and the consultant also took into account the requirements for community policing, for example, the added staffing required for the internal affairs work, the staffing required in the training academy to do all the training that you just heard about, and continue that. So that's how that number was achieved. I hope I answered your question.
No, that's incredibly helpful. And so how, I'm sorry, I don't have this number in front of me, maybe you do. So how many officers short of that number is the department currently?
Right this moment, they're about 300-plus short of the ideal staffing.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, I have a couple. Thanks again for your thoughtful presentation. I also am a member of the Public Safety Committee, and we do get quarterly updates from the police department on the implementation of the consent decree. So thankfully, a lot of the same information that you've shared or similar information is something that they've been also reporting on, so that's a good thing, everybody's on a similar page. What are some things that you're seeing that, because you're painting a picture here of some good progress, but what are some of the things that we still need to work on, aside from staffing, which we just talked about, that you're seeing that there's still a lot of work that still needs to be done?
Do you want to take a crack at that? Sure, there's a lot of work to be done in most areas. So although progress has been steady, there's still a lot of work to be done. I'll take one example, and then I'll pass it around the table. But one example is technology, okay? The city has just invested a lot of money in a new record management system, which is absolutely critical to maintaining the records that the police department needs to keep track of what it's doing internally and to assess its performance internally, and is absolutely essential for us as a monitoring team to determine whether it's complying with the consent decree in key areas like stops, investigative stops, and like searches and frisks, right? Several of the areas where the Department of Justice found a pattern of practice of constitutional violations. We have essentially been unable to assess those areas because the data just hasn't existed. The idea behind the new technology, the new record management system, is that the data will exist in a comprehensive format for us to be able to go in and look at it and make our assessments. So the RMS has now been rolled out, officers have computers in their cars, they have gotten rid of the paper record-keeping system, and they are now keeping all, or supposed to be making all of their reports electronically, right? And that, those electronic reports, which are field-based, feed into the record management system. What we don't know yet is how well the officers are adapting to this new record-keeping system, right? And one of the things that we're going to be doing in the coming months is determining how effectively officers are using that system. But we're, you know, we're at the very, very beginning of the adoption of this system, and we don't know yet how well it's going to go. It's taken a while to come online, it's been one of the major deficiencies in this department, which was basically operating on a data system from the 1980s, and it remains to be seen whether it's going to be effectively adopted. So that's just one area, but I'll literally pass it around the table, because there's a lot of other stuff, too.
Chuck talked about community policing.
Well, community policing, the difficulty there and the challenge there, I should say, is staffing. We just talked about staffing, the community policing plan that Commissioner Harrison put together is a solid plan, but it calls for officers to spend 40% of their time engaged in community policing-type activities. The department is short, patrol division in particular is short, and it's going to be challenging for the department to be able to meet some of the, some of the goals that they have set without the increase in staffing. So we're going to be watching that very, very closely as we begin our assessments. The implementation of that plan will probably be slower than we would like, even though the training and everything is in place and is taking place, but because of the staffing issues, it won't, it more than likely will be very challenging for them to come to full implementation within the next year or so. And so I think that's probably the biggest challenge we have in, in community policing.
John, you want to talk a little bit about EIS and if there are any problems that you see that flash out like a steel thong to you?
Well, the department is looking at implementing a more rigorous early intervention system, which will help them to identify officers that may be headed for trouble. You know, this ties in very well with the, with the discussion I had a minute ago with regard to supervision, and again, and it ties in with technology as well, because technology is a big part of, of the early intervention system. The department has made tremendous progress in the area of officer assistance and safety and officer wellness. And so that really is, I think, an area of significant success. But there is, that's a, that's a different kind of lane than early intervention systems. The early intervention system, when it's fully engaged and onboard, will help supervisors, particularly first-line supervisors, identify officers that they need to engage with and mentor. And if it, if it's deployed properly and efficiently, it will head off a lot of issues with the police department, and frankly, make officers, patrol officers, better officers, detectives, better detectives, and supervisors, better supervisors. It's really a good way- and supervisors, better supervisors. It's really a good way to engage, but we're in early days. And so there's a lot of promise. There's a lot of departments that have benefited from appropriate EIS programs. And we anticipate that with the integrated technology coming on board, with the Axon and Evidence.com technology that's currently being utilized with regard to body worn cameras and managing the data from body worn cameras, that will all be integrated together in, with regard to the early intervention and will be able to identify officers. First-line supervisors, second-line supervisors will be able to identify officers and patterns that can prevent them from getting into, getting into serious trouble and the types of trouble that caused the consent decree to be, come into, come into place here.
One of the areas that really gives me tremendous anxiety, and you can see I've lost a lot of hair over it, is retention. I think, and Nola has the numbers, but I think we've, we've only had two, two months this year where, where hiring has outpaced attrition. I think one month it was by one and I think another month it was by three. So, I mean, that's, that's frightening. And I guess, you know, the common thread that goes through all of this, it really does boil down to staffing. I mean, when you look, even training, which we, we look at as being one of the best things the department has done over the last few years. In fact, I mean, they've been recognized nationally as having a very, very good training program. But the problem that I see is because, because they don't have enough sustainable staff. You worry about whether down the road, when these officers, which have to be trained every year in many different areas, whether you're going to have a sufficient number of staff to train them. And with retention, I mean, unless the department can figure out a way to reduce the attrition, they're going to have a really, really hard time coming out from under the consent decree. So that really is one of the areas that really scares me perhaps the most. You may want to add something, Noel. That's really your area, but.
No, I, I agree with you, Ken. It, when, when you look at the recruiting and the hiring numbers, especially the hiring numbers against the number of officers who are leaving, the picture's not good right now. And it's not unique to Baltimore. Departments across the country is having, are having the same issue. Part of it is tied to just the whole public conversation around policing. Policing is not viewed as a desirable career by many young people right now. So the department has put a great deal of effort in, in trying to recruit individuals. And then unfortunately, as they go through the hiring process, they begin to drop out for a variety of different reasons. And so the hiring numbers are low, despite the best efforts, I think, of the department. And there's, like I said, if you, if you can't get your staffing level, then you've got to reduce your work. I mean, that's about the only way to do it. And then as we look at what that might look like, it's either through offloading some stuff that sworn officers are not necessary to do, to do that work, either by hiring additional civilians, but then you're back into hiring issues, or by offloading the work to other agencies and organizations or not doing the work at all. I mean, those are kind of the tough decisions, I think, that the city and the department may have to face if they can't get up to their staffing numbers.
Ken, let me just add one last thing in, in response to Councilwoman's question. And I'll pick up on, pick up on what Hassan said earlier and ask Hassan to add if there's anything to add. But, you know, although, as Hassan said, there have been, there has been great strides made within the Public Integrity Bureau and in the area of misconduct investigations, there is a long, long way to go. And just one fact that underscores how long a way there is to go is how long it continues to take, and this goes back to staffing too, misconduct investigations to be completed, right? The consent decree calls for misconduct investigations to be completed within 90 days. Although the number of days that it takes on average for a misconduct case to be closed has been reduced significantly over the course of the last year, it's still over 200 days. We all know, because we read in the paper, that last year, there were 12 serious misconduct cases that got thrown out because they weren't completed, or at least the paperwork wasn't completed within the one-year statute of limitations, which doesn't exist anymore because the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights doesn't exist anymore. But at the time, there was a one-year statute of limitations. And 12 serious misconduct cases got thrown out in court because PIB, Public Integrity Bureau, did not finish the investigations on, on time. That's unacceptable, you know, and it's, you know, it's unacceptable in a lot of ways. It's unacceptable for the citizens who have legitimate complaints and want to see them adjudicated fairly and want to see them adjudicated promptly. And the fact that it takes that long for investigations to take place is also unfair to officers who may be accused of misconduct but didn't actually engage in misconduct because they're left there twisting in the wind for months and months and months and are unable to, you know, they're unable to get promotions during that time. They're unable to switch units at that time, and it's unfair to officers as well. So the time, the time it takes for Miss, Public Integrity Bureau to conduct investigations has to be dramatically reduced.
And I'll add just very quickly, I mean, Seth is absolutely right. The items that I discussed were the infrastructure items that are going to start to reduce those times. Teaching these investigators how to actually do the investigations, how to prioritize, how to keep regular contact with citizens. That, that was all left to them without a lot of guidance. Now there are parameters for supervisors and commanders to check in at various points of the investigation. And they also have technology. They can look into a case and see where it is through IA Pro. So all of the infrastructure that we've laid down, that we've laid down over the last three years, three and a half years, is now going to start paying off. But we are, in fact, I don't want to paint a picture that we're done. We have a long way to go, but we've given them, we've collaborated. And collectively, there are now the best tools available for them to succeed. And we're going to be watching, and we're going to be monitoring, and we're going to be helping.
Thank you. I do have another question. I just wanted to acknowledge the council president is back. Happy to turn it over, back over to him. My last, my other question is that I wanted to get a sense from what you were talking about with staffing. You measured really the, the calls and the work. But if we were doing work, just like with the 911 diversion, if we were doing work to actually prevent all of that crime and invest in those things that would prevent people from doing what they're doing that causes a lot of that work, wouldn't that assuage your fears in terms of, you know, the staffing levels?
That's an excellent point. And certainly prevention is, and intervention is something that I don't think we talk enough about. I think it can, and I, and I really do think that appropriate investment in that would show benefit in, not just in the immediate term, but the long term especially. It becomes difficult to quantify that because how do you count something that doesn't happen? But I think that that investment, I believe personally, is, is worth it. And you will reap the benefit far greater than what you've invested in it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Are there any additional questions from members of the council? I see the hand of Councilman Z. Cohen in the first district. Councilman, if yours.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you to the members of the monitoring team for being here with us tonight. I say this as someone who is a fan of the police commissioner and thinks he's done great work and appreciates the work that you all have done. But I think there's a general perception in the public that we're paying a lot of money for this consent decree and not seeing enough results. Relationships among community and officers still, I think, remain strained in a lot of communities. Violence is still an enormous issue within our city. And definitely appreciate the presentation tonight and all of what you highlighted. But I think there is a general perception that the consent decree is really struggling or we are struggling to implement it. So wanted to know from you all, similar to my colleague's question, what needs to be improved? And is it a messaging problem? Is it a communications problem? Like, where is the miss happening? Because the report that you all gave, you know, was positive for the most part. But I would say the perception in community is not positive, at least what I hear again and again and again. So just want to kind of get a sense from you all about what changes need to be made to make this thing really work. Because I think if the public doesn't believe in it, then it's not going to work.
Councilperson, council. Is designed to do. It's designed to reform this department so that it becomes a 21st century police department. Now, does that intersect in some, in some respects with, with the crime rate? It, it probably does in some respects, but keep in mind, the consent decree is not a crime strategy. The consent decree is designed specifically to reform the department. Now, I understand that, you know, and I, look, I've, I've lived in Baltimore my entire life. I've been here 70 years and I, and we've had issues with the police department ever since I was a little boy. And it's going to take time. I mean, I understand the sentiment in the community. They haven't seen the kind of progress they want to see yet. But you have to keep in mind, this department was in such bad shape when we came into the picture. I mean, they were totally dysfunctional. And it's taken, you know, every bit of three years just to give them the tools so that they could begin to improve themselves. You have to train these folks. I mean, you know, when you don't have a good training program, you're going to have bad police officers. If you don't have good policies, you're going to have bad police officers. So, you know, we have to do this thing in a very systematic way. And it's got to be done in a way where it's going to be sustainable. And that takes, that just takes time. And I understand that, you know, people are impatient. They want to see results overnight. The only way this is going to, in my, and this is my view of this, the only way this is, is going to comfort the public is when they see the police officer on the street behaving the way the consent decree is demanding that they behave. And we are working to make sure through policies and through training that over time, you will have a police department that will do exactly what the consent decree requires. That's going to take time. It's going to take years before the, the public begins to see on a, on a wholesale basis that most of the police officers are behaving the way they should. Are you going to have some bad apples every now and then? Of course you are. But I would, would say this to you, and this is just anecdote, just by way of example. We looked at use of force cases, I think, between 2018 and 2019. And then the, and then there was a drop between 2019 and 2020. And I may be giving the numbers wrong, but, but what I am telling you is that there was a significant drop in use of force cases after these police officers were trained. And that's one area that, of course, creates a lot of animosity between the community and the police department. So all I'm saying to you is I understand the, the perceptions and, you know, I, I can't, you know, we can't wrestle with, with something we can't, we just can't beat right now. But I do think one of the advantages to having a consent decree is that it's not, it's not here for the short term. It's, it's, it's a court order. There's a federal judge that oversees it. You know, we have to take the public criticism. I mean, we understand that. But, but, but one of the advantages we have is because it is a court order and it's a, and it's a federal court decree. You know, I think we have the, the time to reform this department so that in a few years, you know, I think the public will see a transformed police department that will behave the way that we all believe a police department should, should, should be in an urban city like Baltimore. I don't know if someone must have had anything.
You said that very well.
So if I could just follow up briefly, and I, I do appreciate that. And again, appreciate the work that you all are doing. I think there is a perception within the public that many officers are confused right now about what their job is in terms of the crime fight. And I hear this from officers sometimes as well. Sorry, fire alarm in my house. I, I guess, looking for you all to help clarify that the consent decree is not in any way, you know, handcuffing our officers. I think that everybody wants to see constitutional policing. Everyone wants to see, no one wants to see the abuses of the past, which are extremely well documented, not both in the DOJ report and by all sorts of communities. No one wants to go back there. But I think the perception right now is that police, in a lot of cases, aren't policing. And the rhetoric that's out there is that it's because of the consent decree. And so I guess what I'm trying to ask and not doing a particularly eloquent job of doing so, but what I'm trying to push for is how do we get past that hurdle? How do we make this something where officers aren't on community walks saying, "I can't police because my hands are tied because of the consent decree"? How do I not hear that when I go to community association meetings? I mean, that is unfortunately the perception, and perception becomes reality.
And we've heard that. And again, I'm going to turn this over. But for example, let me give you an example. Well, I've heard this for years, and this is even from people who should know better. They say, "Well, you know, we can't, we, we can't engage in stop and frisk." Well, that's total nonsense. We don't call it stop and frisk for a good reason because it really is, it's not, it's a poor choice of words. I mean, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but you've got to have reasonable articulable, articulable suspicion to make the stop. And you've got to have reasonable articulable suspicion to do the search. And so when people say stop and search, some people assume once you stop, you can search. That's the reason we got rid of that term. But guess what? There's something called investigatory stops in the consent decree. It's the same thing. It's just, it's, it's expressed in a more constitutional way. So that's just one example of what I would call is fake news. Now, there are officers, and this has been going on for quite some time, where, you know, police officers, for whatever reason, some who don't want to work, some who have, who have been given bad information by their supervisors, some who don't really, most of them, a lot of them have not even read the consent decree. But my point is, is that this gets back to something that Sean talked about earlier. This has to do with supervision. And this really is part of what the consent decree is requiring. And it's going to take time again, but you, you need good supervisors who, who train their officers the right way. And so when you get an officer who is a young officer who may be confusing, and I'm going to let Chuck talk a little bit about this because he's a former police officer. But, you know, you've got good supervisors who say to the officer, "Look, you can do this. You can do this. You can do this." They learn that some of the nonsense that has been spread over the last few years is simply untrue. But Chuck, I'll turn this over to you because.
Well, I think one of the areas that the department could improve is both their internal and external communications to make sure that people are very clear as to any changes that are being made as a result of changes in policy, procedure, or what have you. Now hopefully, the training takes care of that. But that's a constant, a constant effort. To not accept that as an excuse, "I can't do X, Y, Z." Well, you can, depending on what it is they claim they can't do. But I think you mentioned it, sir, yourself. What we're, what we're looking for here is constitutional policing. And you can do it, but here's how you have to do it. And under what circumstances are you allowed to do X, Y, and Z? And the department could do a better job internally communicating that as well as externally to the public so that people have a clear understanding as what the consent decree is and just as importantly, what it is not. And that is an area that I think more work needs to be, needs to be done. Just one last thing. Whenever you have change, especially in policing, which is where I spent my entire adult life, it takes a little time before you start to really get people within the organization to really understand and to do things the way you need them to do it. Police aren't the easiest group in the world to actually change in terms of having them do their jobs a, a different way. But it is doable, and it will happen. I, I have no doubt about that. But I, the department could do a better job in terms of the communication and also really putting pressure on these supervisors to make sure that they don't accept that. And they make it very clear, even at roll calls, and when they interact with the public and clear that sort of misconception up.
I would just say, I, I would just, I would just say too, if you have a police officer that says that they can't police because of the consent decree, they really need to reexamine what they're doing as a career. Because all the consent decree does is require that they conduct their policing activities under the United States Constitution, period. And if they can't police in line with the And if they can't police in line with the constitutional requirements of policing and conduct, they shouldn't be policing.
I mean, some of the things that they were doing is the reason why we have a consent decree. And so, you know, I mean, that's just being real. So, you know, yeah, you can't do X, Y, Z. You never should have been able to do X, Y, and Z. But now with the consent decree, here is how you can effectively address crime and disorder in the city and do it in a constitutional way. And that's basically all we're saying here.
And I'm and I'm sorry because this is a really important question, Councilman. And and so I I want to address it too. But just to take what Chuck and Sean said and to make it concrete. One of the things that all of us were doing when we were helping BPD work on their curriculum, on training on stops, searches, and arrests, right? Was not simple, was to make sure the curriculum didn't just say you can't do this and you can't do that. It was to let them know this is what you can do under the Constitution. This is what you can do that is consistent with policy in order to fight crime and disorder. Right? Same thing with this very recently completed training on lesser offenses or quality of life offenses, as we call them, which was done along with the community policing training. The whole idea behind that lesser offenses training was to tell officers what they can do to address crime and disorder rather than focusing on what they can't do. So that that's the idea here is to give the officers the tools they need, consistent with the Constitution, consistent with policy in order to address crime and disorder.
Let me say one other thing, Councilman. And this goes back to your original question about the the crime rate. And again, you know, the consent decree is not a crime fighting strategy. But what it is designed to do is to rebuild some trust between the community and the police department. And why is that important? It's important for a whole lot of reasons, but one of the big reasons, as I see it as a citizen of this city, is that, you know, police are going to have a difficult time solving some of these serious crimes if if when they go in a community and nobody trusts them. Where are they going to get the information to be able to catch the bad guys? And so to me, it makes a great deal of sense for the police to perform in a way where, you know, we want them to be effective. We want them to get the bad guys off the street, but we want them to do it in a constitutional way. So that when the public sees an arrest, they don't look at it as, oh, they're just harassing this poor kid because he's black or he's Hispanic or whatever. They'll look at it and say, yeah, that guy should have been arrested. And so that breeds trust. And down the road, as I said, it does take time, but over time, the hope is that, you know, you'll rebuild that trust so that the community will be more helpful to the police than they are now.
Understand and appreciate all that. Thank you all again. I will say personally, I am not for stop and frisk under any name or any form of unconstitutional policing. And I understand the work you're doing. I'm just saying there was a perception out there that is officers are in some cases doing minimal and some of the rhetoric is that it's because of this consent decree. But again, appreciate you all. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation.
No, thank you, Councilman Cohen. In that same line of questioning, when we talk about, you know, whether we're in East Baltimore, West Baltimore, Northwest Baltimore, Southeast Baltimore, we're all hearing kind of that same stuff at different moments of time. Is there a way for the community to kind of report that back to the consent decree? I know that we've been working with the police department and I know that Chairman Conway, as well as Councilman Glover, who's kind of been the council lead on this particular issue over the past several months, I mean, since dating back to the budget. But is there a way for the community to kind of lodge those complaints to the consent degree monitoring team? So you are aware of what's going on.
The answer is yes, and I'll turn it over to you, Asol.
Yes, Mr. President, there are several ways through the neighborhood liaisons. We've got them in all of the districts. And also there's on our website, which is There is a contact us and that email is info@bpdmonitor.com. That comes in directly to us and we distribute it to members of the team who are working in that particular topic or in that particular sort of line of work. So those are the two primary ways for the public to reach us. The 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 best way, I I will say, is to learn who their neighborhood liaisons are, get to know them, and they actually have intake forms that can be filled out and those come directly to me. And I get those, if it's in the form of a complaint, I get that to the BPD. If it's something for us to handle, we'll assign it out to one of our team members to get back to that citizen.
Are are you guys receiving those complaints directly back from the your neighborhood liaisons to date?
We are, yes, sir.
What what have you, this has been a problem from sev- for several years. What are you actively doing to kind of support BPD? So we can get away from the rhetoric associated with they can't do enforcement, they can't make arrests on known criminal activity because of the consent decree?
That's not the area that I work in. I worry, I work in the misconduct.
I'm saying from the monitoring team, anybody can answer the question. You guys are sitting in as the monitoring team. Community liaison is are communicating the same thing that I'm pretty sure every single council person on this call has heard in a community meeting, has received an email about, has received something on Twitter about. You guys are receiving that information back. I'm just wondering over the past three years, what active steps has the consent monitoring team taken to ensure that the Baltimore Police Department are either chaining their officers up or getting ahead of what what Councilman Cohen described as rhetoric associated with the communication to our community members?
I'll tell you what I've done when I've gotten those complaints. I'll generally call the the director of CDIU and I'll indicate my my outrage that you have a police officer who's going to a community meeting telling the community that he can't or she can't do something because of the consent decree. And so I expect that 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 information will end up where it should. In some cases, it should end up in PIB. Because, you know, in some cases, they are, they're engaging in conduct that's, for lack of a better term, unbecoming a police officer. We we don't enforce and we don't investigate police misconduct. What we do is our job is is to oversee the process to make sure that it's that it's that it's that it's handled in an appropriate way. And that's, but when we get those complaints, that's what we do.
No, I I I thought that was probably the answer. I guess, and we don't have to answer on this call. I guess when we meet back in the next quarter, you know, I I know this council would probably want something that's more proactive as opposed to reactive. We know that this has been an issue. It's been an ongoing issue for several years at this point, right? So what I'm asking from the monitoring team, if if there's a way that you can embed in whatever training that you're kind of developing, you take a step back and work with the command staff. I'm not sure what the monitoring team would suggest, but do you feel that it's appropriate that you could kind of work to ensure that BPD is getting ahead of this known issue, not just from the members on this board, but also from your community liaisons and also from you individually yourselves? So not just the onesie twosie reactive things that we're doing every single day, but can we put a plan in place to try to proactively cut out this this really sore part as it relates to what we consider something that's positive in a consent decree that's being used as really negative rhetoric in our communities?
And that and I agree with you and that's part of the best training and supervision. I mean, that's part of supervision. That's where you need your sergeants and your lieutenants to do their job. I mean, that really is where this comes in. When you talk about, you know, again, we don't investigate these kind of events. Our job is to oversee the system. But what we do is we will tell and we will help the department put in a curriculum in place so that their supervisors understand that one of their jobs is to make sure that if an officer says that or that information comes to that supervisor, that he takes that officer back. Maybe the first time is to counseling is counseling but or her, but if that kind of conduct persists, that supervisor has an obligation to take it further.
Mr. President, it it it's an excellent point and and we will take yours and your colleagues' point back to the commissioner, to his help, to his commanders and to the consent decree implementation unit chief or director Shannon Sullivan. What we do know that they are doing on a regular basis is they sort of have, you know, a road show, the consent decree implementation unit, where they're going out to each of the districts at roll call and addressing a certain aspect of the consent decree to let officers know what they can do. They also circulate both videos and messaging on their internal communication system powered DMS to educate officers about the consent decree and what they can do. But you're absolutely right. They need to do more. We've told them they need to do more and we'll we'll convey your message to them.
I mean, that sits at the core. I mean, literally the foundation of what we hear. If if officers that were supposed to be supporting this cultural shift in the department and we're supposed to be providing the skill sets to handle constitutional policing, if their if their if their response to a community member who knows or seeing illegal activity that's directly potentially tied to crime and their reasoning that they can't do anything is because of the consent decree, that just exacerbates so much of what this consent decree and what this team was ultimately formed to try to correct. So that's why I guess I'm a little disappointed in understanding that in in a couple of years now, we haven't directly tried to address that on its head, right? And I appreciate the partnership and I appreciate the 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 concerns of going back and talking to the police commissioner. But I don't think that we needed to have this call tonight to know that that has been an issue and will continue to be an issue until we proactively eradicate it.
I think we're on the same page, Mr. President. I mean, I, again, this is all part of training. It's part of the training and supervision. It's part of making sure that supervisors understand it's their role to put a stop to this. I mean, we know it happens because we hear about it and we report it. And we expect the officers to be trained so they don't continue to do it in the future. And we also expect their supervisors to make sure that they stop this activity. You know, look, this is a culture change. And I mean, I'm certain there are a lot of officers that are doing the right thing, but there are some bad officers out there that still haven't gotten the the playbook or they haven't read it. And so you're going to have these these situations occur, but it really is up to the supervisors to fix this and the training to fix it.
And and I will say this too, we we have been very conscious of of the messaging and the potential damage that that could do. And so we have made sure when we are reviewing training curriculum and looking at and actually observing the training itself, if we identify a trainer, for instance, that's not expressing what officers can do and instead kind of expressing, well, it's not, you can't do what we used to do, you know, anymore because of the consent decree. That trainer won't be training officers anymore. I mean, we've we've actually had a couple of instances in training where we were observing it and and trainers had to be swapped out. We will continue to be very diligent about that in my estimation.
Now, I know there's a lot of a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience on consent decrees that makes up this team, experience that spans far outside of Baltimore. Some of you are on even multiple teams at the same time. Are you seeing the same problem in other cities or is this a phenomenon in Baltimore that our officers are literally saying they can't do certain aspects of their job because of the consent decree?
We have, I've worked on a couple, Mr. President. And what we have done in other cities is really talk to the police chief and the deputy chiefs to really get down into those districts and talk to them. I mean, very much in the same way that we're dealing with it here. Because this process is a reform from the inside out through our technical assistance and through the requirements of the consent decree. And that is going to happen. I think that's an easy thing for officers to say to the community. It's absolutely wrong. Officers now have better tools to more effectively deal with crime and disorder while ensuring that people are protected under the Constitution of the United States. And I I've heard it on on ride alongs where we can't do things anymore. And we've had conversations directly with officers to say, but there are options. You know, you can no longer absolutely go pull your cruiser up, clear a corner, and if somebody runs, chase him down and lock him up. You know, you have to deal within the bounds of the Constitution. So it's it's everywhere and it's even in in cities that aren't under consent decrees. Where police leadership has sort of clamped down on policing constitutionally, ensuring that that occurs. People I hear patrol officers saying the same things. They don't even have to be under a consent decree. They just feel and they feel like they're being constrained and I think it's an education issue. Having a consent decree, I think, makes it a a much better scenario in terms of we have the authority, meaning the the court has the authority to make sure that all this training happens and that the culture changes from the inside.
Thank you. And just, you if you guys don't have the exact information tonight, that's fine. But how much have we paid from a monitoring perspective to date? Do you, would you know that, Mr. Thompson? If not, we can get, we can get it offline.
I don't know it off. I mean, I know we've, we, there's a set fee every year.
Yeah, I don't, do you know what that fee is? I'm not familiar right now at this time.
It's 1.475 million dollars is the cap each year under the consent decree.
Do we normally hit the cap?
It's varied. So actually, the first couple of years, we didn't last year, but actually, we haven't. So the way it works is, I guess, each of the first three years, we didn't meet the cap. But the amount left over carries over. And that's the way it's worked so far. I would say so far, it's been probably just north of $4 million over three and a half years.
Got you. So when you say carry over, the first year out of a 1.5 cap, it costs a million dollars. We carry that point five into that subsequent year. And now that subsequent year, the cap is up to 2 million. Is that right?
If needed, it depends on how it's budgeted, but yes.
And so and that 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 money is non lapses and it just continues to carry?
Yes, with the idea that at some point, you know, I mean, at no point will we incur more than 1.475 million in a year.
I I'm not sure I understand that.
So it it's sort of the, it it sort of has to do with the the timing of the payments.
Oh, okay. So, okay, but but I I guess I understand some, practically understand, but but in theory, it's only 1.5 a year. So again, it's not like you get to that subsequent, like third or fourth year. Now, you've had some cost savings or or money that wasn't spent and you just continue to carry that money over. Theoretically, in that 12 month period, whatever calendar year we we kind of, you got to bill us on and and we kind of pay those invoices. It's about 1.4 whatever million dollars a year.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Understood. At this point, are there any additional questions or concerns from members of the council? I see the hand of Council McGlover from the 13th District. Council McGlover, the floor, just.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to everyone that are on this panel today. So I want to piggyback off something that the council president had just mentioned. Out of the 1.5 million, exactly how many liaisons do you guys have? As a part of your program?
So we have nine liaisons, one for each police district. We have a community engagement coordinator, Miller Roberts, who's, I guess, out of the picture here, who is in charge of the neighborhood liaisons. And then we have a community engagement liaison, a lead liaison, Wanda Watts, who's right there at the end of the table. So we have 11 people on our team that are exclusively devoted to community engagement. And then there are other members of the team, including myself and Mr. Thompson, Chief Ramsey, Mr. Aiden, who spend a lot of time on community engagement as well.
Okay, so totally, totally, your say is about maybe what, 20 of you guys?
I'm sorry, for the whole team?
Yeah.
For the whole team, it's probably more like, if you include the liaisons, it's probably more like 25.
Okay. And that's because, so over here, like in the Eastern District, honestly, I don't know who the dissent decree liaison is for the eastern part of the district. And if, you know, after this meeting is over, you know, it will be great that you guys send us an email stating which liaison is tied to what community, excuse me, police district. I see him as Watts in the back, but I think they said you were like in charge of the liaisons period overall, correct?
The community engagement piece, yes.
Okay, yeah.
We can send that information. It's on our website, but we'll send it to you.
Okay, yes.
I sent you a link before I've sent, I'll resend it.
Okay, to the to the entire council, I greatly appreciate it. And then I I think about like piggybacking off Councilman Cohen like earlier. He mentioned about how the officers are feeling they're handcuffed and I was just on a community mark like recently. And I was told by officer that in order for them to make an arrest, they would have to. they would have to stop the individual who purchased the drugs. That's what's going back 10 years ago with a stop and frisk type of, you know, mindset, which I know is clearly wrong. But again, they're saying that we pull up this individual, we stop this individual, and we're asking this individual, where do you purchase your drugs from? And when you tell us that, you know, you guys are hearing these complaints, and you've also done ride alongs, and you guys are introducing this information, you know, taking it over to the police commissioner and his staff, and providing these trainings that we're saying like to today, three years, we still haven't seen or heard of a plan on the training for those officers to say, look, at the end of the day, our hands are being tied. There's there's really nothing in place. So I'm wondering if, you know, the monies that we giving you guys, does it really matter? Because at the end of the day, we, the council, the liaisons that work for us, we're giving the information back to the police department. And you're telling us that you guys are doing the same thing, but none of us are getting any results. So I'm wondering, like, is it really a need for, you know, the 1.5 million to even, you know, go to you guys when, you know, we're providing this information firsthand, you know, even to the officers? And basically, you guys are taken back, you know, to the commissioner, what we supposedly telling your liaisons? And apparently, there's a disconnect somewhere because we're not seeing it in our community. And I am tired of hearing seniors in my community tell me that they're afraid to go to the corner store to get a carton of eggs or some milk. When I hear those seniors call me and write to me, I look at them as my grandparents. And many of you in there now are grandparents. And you would like to go to the store to purchase your eggs and your milk. But what I'm saying is that there is a disconnect. The community needs to know, none of us behind the closed doors. The community needs to know that you guys are giving the training that you think the Baltimore City Police Department needs, and the Baltimore Police Department needs to tell the community if it's working or not. It's not.
No, let me.
I'm sorry.
The training is there. The training, that's the, the training does exactly what you say. It's training officers to do things the right way. Now, does that mean every, I mean, look, you got a, you got, I don't know, 1,500 to 2,000 police officers. You're going to find a bad egg here and there, of course you are. Well, let me finish. The whole point of the consent decree is to reduce those bad officers over time. That's happening. Now, it's not happening fast enough for us, but we recognize that they have to be trained, and they also need good supervision. And this is what the consent decree is doing. But it's going to take time for all these culture changes to happen. It doesn't happen overnight.
But how do we get out of the good old boy network? You say we need to change supervision. Supervision isn't being changed. And maybe, I'm assuming, only because of the fact, when I hear from many officers that walk the beat, this friend of that friend, and this friend is that friend, where we're not changing the trajectory of those sergeants, those lieutenants. These are just individuals that was already a part of the good old boy network that just happened to get a promotion. And these activities just still exist to the day. We we have some great officers out there that are doing some fantastic work. I talk to them every night, but they're being undermined by some of the, just a few that are creating a narrative in the community that we can't do anything, our hands are tied up. That's bull crap. It's frustrating. And the reason why, to me, is because, and the reason why it's frustrating for me is because I see on a daily basis in my district that, I'm sorry. And I and I and I know she said just as well as I do. But again, there's a disconnect, I think, between not the council and 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 you guys on the dissent decree, not the council and the Baltimore City Police Department. I think it's between the dissent decree and the Baltimore City Police Department. Because you guys are giving the trainings to the police department. Apparently, somewhere down the line, they're not implementing those trainings because we're continuously hearing the same thing for the last three years. And it has to stop.
We don't disagree with you on that. And again, all I'm saying to you, these officers are being trained. It's good training. Are you going to have a few officers who, as you, as you just said yourself, most of these officers are abiding by the training. Supervision is 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 in process right now. So these these supervisors are going to have to be trained again and again and again. It's going to, look, it's going to take time, councilperson, councilman. It's not going to happen overnight. The idea is is to train and to have supervision so that you weed out these bad officers. And that will happen over time. But until, you know, you're always going to have one bad apple every now and then, and that's just the way it is.
Can you project how much time you think it may, it may take? Like, how many, how many years, how many more years of 1.55 million you guys need? Or you're going up to, I think it's 2 million. How many more years of of 2 millions of dollars that you need, you guys need from the city of Baltimore? Do you project?
How many people, it's not, you mean, you're asking how many more years that we think we're going to be in the consent decree?
How many more years you think you you guys need?
Look, we are, what we're doing right now, we're beginning the assessment right now. We can't tell you right now until we, we're going to, we're going to do, we're doing assessments right now in all of these areas that you're talking about. And we will have a better feel for this probably sometime in the second quarter of next year of 2022.
Okay, well, I I have no further questions, Mr. President, and thank you, guys, on the panel and for listening to me. But honestly, it's very, very frustrating. And and again, myself and my district, I'm starting to see, you know, the drug dealing pop up, you know, more than, you know, we see the squeegee kids on the corner and and things of the nature. And it has to stop. It's very, very frustrating.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Glover. You know, we know that you've been pushing this issue since kind of you joined the council. And I know you made it a big issue during the budget. We look forward to the monitoring team to come back. Hopefully, you'll have more proactive solutions about what you can do or what we can do in kind of eradicating this. Again, this kind of sits at the core, the foundation of the purpose of what the consent decree was there. And that's to build, one, relationships with our community. And we can't have a segment of officers that are undermining in the intention of what the consent decree is supposed to do.
We agree.
Are there any other questions or concerns from members of the council? Councilwoman Ramos from 14th District, the floor is yours. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Ramos. I did see the hand of Councilman Burnett. I know that you've already gone in sequence, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilman Burnett, do you still have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. President. So to the the monitoring team, in the beginning of your presentation, one of the things that you noted during the the opening was a reference to findings around sexual assault within the department and how those investigations have been handled. Earlier this year, we held a hearing in which it was disclosed that the clearance rate for sexual assault and rape was at 0%. Obviously, that that number has 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 gone upwards since then. But my my question is, for those type of metrics, you know, obviously, the focus is almost always on violent crime. It is a violent crime, and it it doesn't appear that we're meeting the benchmarks for foreclosure for victims of sexual assault. Can you speak to how that particular category is prioritized by your team?
Sexual assault investigation is a key area in the consent decree. I am the team lead on, in that area. Where we're at at the moment is the policy and the standard operating procedure for sexual assault investigators have been published. Training for the investigators and detectives was conducted last year. We are, we will be starting actually next month a formal assessment of those investigations. We'll be looking at cases from 2018, 2019, and 2020. We will review every case, not every case, we'll review a random sample from those years of cases that were opened to determine how well the detectives are following the guidelines contained in the policy and the SOP. We expect to be, have a report on that assessment by the first quarter of next year.
And as a follow up on that, that assessment will be, it's a question, will the, will the the assessment be presented at a public, in a public setting like this? And I guess, how 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 will, what would happen from there? I guess, so obviously, the report comes out. Or can you walk us through the process for policy development as a result of those findings?
So as a result of the findings, like I said, the report will be generated. That report is, will be filed with the court, at which time it is is public. And it will be put on our website and as well as probably BPD's website. I don't know about that, but it would definitely be on ours. We, every, every year, 12 to 18 months, the policy and the SOP will be reviewed. So by the time we ready to review the current policy and standard operating procedure, we would have the results of that assessment. So whether the assessment may indicate policy changes or it may indicate need additional training in certain areas or just follow ups by the supervisors to ensure that detectives are following the procedures. And a key part of all of that is focused on interviewing the victim in a trauma-informed way and also ensuring that the investigation is suspect-oriented. That is, instead of focusing on what the victim did or didn't do, the focus will be put on what the suspect did or didn't do.
Mr. President, if I may ask one more follow up on that. So, and this is, I'm trying to figure out how to word the question. But my office has received complaints from victim advocates around the issue of sexual assault, indicating that there is, they have frequent experiences in which they've referred cases to the department, and they've declined to investigate them at all. I guess, two-part question. How should we be advising advocates to file complaints about that in particular? And are you, I guess, tracking, I, yeah, let me just leave it at that question, I guess, because I don't really know how to word the other piece of it just yet. But essentially, what I'm trying to figure out is like, how do we raise this issue? And and how can people, what other recourse do victim advocates have if the department is declining to investigate sexual assault allegations?
If if they're filing a complaint, they can file it through PIB, and it would be in the form of a service failure. And then they would contact the commanders that are overseeing whichever investigative unit. This actually goes for any service failure complaint. They would begin an investigation and take a look into it.
Sorry, final question on this. How does the, does your review track cases that are declined for investigation? Like, does the department have to report cases that they don't take up to investigate?
Yes, sir. So every year since 2018, the department has produced a report on the sexual assault investigations. And in that report, they report out how many cases might have been declared unfounded, which is, I think, probably what you're referring to. That number has dropped over the previous years. The report's available on the Baltimore Police website, and also, I believe, it's on the monitoring team website.
I don't know that it's on our website.
Yeah.
We can.
And I can certainly make sure we get a link to to those reports to you. But as reflected there, also, the monitoring team does its own assessment of that data. We've done that for 2018, 2019, and we're in the process of doing it for 2020. And part of that data includes looking at the unfounding of cases.
Perfect. I'll look out for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilman Burnett. Are you done with all your questions? Because you can keep going if you have some additional ones, Jermaine, particularly to that topic.
That's all I have right now. I'll I'll wait for them to send the link, and I'll follow up.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. I think Councilwoman Ramos, you had some additional questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thanks again to all of you for being here this evening. I want to go back to the staffing conversation. Two things there. One is, I had asked about, you know, what if we make some investments in prevention? Because the work issue, if we don't have enough police, we have to stop or do different work that doesn't entail that much. And given the retention issue, which I'm going to ask about in a second, you know, it it just seems to me like, you're, I mean, and you had said, you're right. I mean, we have to have investment in in ways to prevent crimes from happening to begin with. Frankly, we have a lot of obligations here to fund. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to fund those other investments if we have such a large investment in, you know, these other things in the police department. Do you have any suggestions?
Gee, I don't know. I'm glad I'm not, I'm not a council member, for one thing. Don't envy your job and and those tough decisions.
So the thing is that one of the decisions is made for us all the time, and that's, that's the problem.
So I I think in in general, the advice that I think that we and I would give is to, as much as possible, is to try to to get the necessary data, because I'm a data walk, I'm sorry, but that's what I am, and to help drive that decision-making process. So for, I think the best example right now is the work that's being done in in behavioral health, where they're able to look at the number of potential calls that are being handled right now by the police department that could be handled much better by a mental health professional. And then, as that happens, it removes, not only removes the police from doing that work, but provides even better service to the client that's involved. And and that, and that really requires, and Randy can speak to this so much better than I can, but that really requires the kind of investment from the city to make sure those mental health services are available and present as as needed.
Yeah, but I'm saying that we have some decisions that are made for us in terms of how much we need to pay for the police department, and we can't invest in other things. And so what I'm hoping that the consent decree monitoring team can maybe figure out for us is, you know, if there's a certain level of investment in these, and maybe that's not your job, maybe that's our job, is there, you know, a certain level of of work to prevent crime? How much do we, you know, not need the staffing, you know? And I I'm just curious about that, because it doesn't make sense to me how we're supposed to be investing in one thing and another, and they're supposed to be working hand in hand. So I just, you know, that decision is made for us. And so that basically is showing that we're we're not concentrating on the the prevention pieces that we need because we have to fund the police department. And I'm more of a, you know, make sure we're doing the right investments. And so we, I think that we would like to at least get a sense of what would that look like? And I don't, again, I don't know that that comes from you, but I know that that is something that the, has been given to us from consent decree, you know, anyway. And then the last thing is about retention. I also worry about it. The police department has reported to us that the, the fact is that we have been getting those reports. We still have not gotten the report on retention based on race because I'm I'm very much concerned that we're, our our black and brown officers are not staying. And, but we don't know that yet. And so have you been doing more of that oversight and asking those questions as well? Like, you know, what is, what are the exit interviews saying? What are, who is actually leaving? And and the age, because I don't think it's retirement age. I think it's younger. And, and the age, because I don't think it's retirement age. I think it's younger. And I think that is an issue that we're going to have to resolve.
Those are statistics that the department has been tracking for at least the last three years. And I don't know off the top of my head what the answer is, but I know that they do have the data.
They report to us quarterly, which I'm grateful for, and they are also equally worried about retention. We haven't received the specific numbers yet.
We're aware that they have them. They do, they do track those statistics. As I said, they've been tracking them for the last three years that I'm aware of.
So what is, and so what do the numbers say to you about why there's a retention problem?
That's a very long conversation, but in terms of retirement, not a lot because officers who are eligible to retire, and frankly, this is a national wave. Officers who are eligible to retire are retiring. And even though they could still continue to work for additional years, when they hit that eligibility stage, what we're seeing now, and this is a national trend, it's not unique to Baltimore, they're leaving. In terms of what specifically to Baltimore the retention numbers show and have shown for a while is that officers who do not complete their career, in other words, do not work until retirement eligibility in Baltimore, leave the department roughly between their third and their sixth year. And those officers, the bulk majority of those officers leave for other departments, leave for other police departments. And some of them very close geographically to Baltimore for a myriad of reasons. But one of the reasons is, of course, incentives that other departments have offered in terms of signing bonuses for them to come work there. And, and different schedules and different pay schedules. And so I know that's something that the city's working with the FOP in contract negotiations, et cetera, and hopefully, you know, those things will, will be able to be resolved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any additional questions or concerns from members of the council? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to turn it over to, I'm sorry, did I miss someone?
No, continue, Mr. President. Be fine.
Yes, Mr. Green, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Green, we're going to turn it over to public testimony. For those who are signed in using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. We will start with you. Next, we will go through all the users who have called into, I'm sorry, there's some feedback. Next, we will go through all users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who have called in, attendees who have called in and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one. You will hear two beeps when you're unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, they simply need to say that they do not want to testify after they hear the two beeps. If any speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back and we will attempt to take your testimony. At this time, Mr. Larry Green, if you could walk us through that process and proceed to the first member of the public who would like to testify.
Mr. President, we don't have any callers called in that's unrecognized. And we had started this earlier. So we have Mr. Ali Smith. Mr. Smith, do you have comment or testimony?
I believe the monitoring team has dropped off. They got up and turned off. I wasn't aware that they were leaving.
Okay, Mr. Khalid Madiris.
Mr. Green, if you could hold on, I'm going to try to get someone on the phone from the monitoring team.
I think they're working again, but just in case they don't.
So I just got off the phone with someone from the monitoring team. They said that the location that they're at, the law firm IT's department, shut them off at a certain time period. Said that they were only scheduled to be there until 8:30. For some reason, they stood up and it clicked off at around 8:57, 8:55. I'm going to give the council an option. You know, we only get the shot of meeting with them quarterly. That's kind of the way it is. We could always call them back in. Could put this hearing in recess because they've had technical issues on their side to reignite it. I think it's only fair, particularly if there's members of the public that have questions or concerns that they would like to raise to us, particularly in front of the consent decree monitoring team. But it's important that we provide the public the opportunity and access of doing so. So, Mr. Green, I believe that there's a couple individuals who have said that they would like to communicate, at least a question or concern.
Actually, it's only one. It's only one and that's Khalid, because I sent out a message through the chat to the attendees requesting that they raise their hand or either they put their concern in a chat. And the only one I see here that raised their hand is Mr. Khalid Madiris.
Is he on the phone right now?
Mr. Madiris, are you with us?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Madiris, I believe, do you have some question, concern, comment?
Yeah.
To the monitoring team?
I did. I had a comment, you know, I don't know if it needs to be recessed or whatever. I can, I can kind of stay here with the council. What I was kind of thinking, I broached it before about what, kind of what Councilmember Cohen was saying about public perception.
Well, the reality is, you've taken time out of your schedule to participate in civic engagement with this council. With respect of your comment, you should have the ability of addressing that. And you should not necessarily have to wait for three months to do so at the next quarterly briefing. You're the only person that is left on the ask, that left to ask a question, that's left to ask a question. This council is willing to put this, this hearing in recess to ensure that we connect back with the monitoring team in hopes that they'll be able to figure out a technical solution so they can hear your question. But I'll give you the ability of picking or choosing how we would like to proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't, I don't think that's necessary. I plan to be on the next quarterly hearing too, and I'm deeply interested in this issue. So I don't think that's necessary at this time.
Understood. Just, I want to make sure that we're very respectful of your time. So at this point, on the floor is yours and as a council, we'll listen to your questions and concerns. If it's something that we can kind of take down and take back to the monitoring team, we will do so as well.
Yeah, thanks. I'll just really quickly, I just, I just wanted to touch back because, you know, Councilmember Cohen was talking about, you know, the public. And I'll say, I'm, you know, pretty deeply interested in this issue. My name's Kayla Maderas. I'm an attorney as well. And, you know, from my anecdotal experience, most people either aren't even aware that there is a consent decree, haven't really read it. You know, I'm just very jaded about the, the ability of the department to change. You know, and I think one of the things that really, I mentioned before troubled me is that if you read the DOJ report, it's just, you know, hundreds of pages of just serious allegations. And the fact that Baltimore Police, like their public position is none of it's true. So I think from the public, if anyone takes the time to read that and then sees that they really, they admit to none of it, it almost seems like they got free, you know, they're getting millions of dollars in technical advice and all these resources for doing bad stuff. You know, and after I read that report, I was kind of curious like how it got to this point. And I found several articles from the late 90s, early 2000s of, you know, when the former mayor, I'm forgetting his name, but he helped bring in the broken windows. You know, the criminologists that helped put in broken windows in New York, and it was all the same things the, the monitoring team was saying that this is going to make all the incentives right for the police, that this is going to build public trust, that this is going to address the crime problem, that it's going to be constitutional. People are going to really like this. And within 10 years, you know, we had like the, the GTTF scandal and just the department is seemingly out of control. And I also found articles about how years before the consent decree, all this money was allocated to improve the data system. And, and the monitoring team said in their most recent report that the data system is so bad that they can't even tell if any of the stuff they're doing is working. They can't even, they can't even monitor it. So I think, you know, that tennis stuff troubles. And then one of the things, unfortunately, the panel's not here, but, you know, Charles Ramsey, I'm from, I used to live in DC for many years. And then 2004, he ordered, you know, he was involved in one of the most unconstitutional, biggest unconstitutional policing events in the city's history where he ordered hundreds of people to be arrested, locked, held overnight. These were journalists, lawyers, some of them tourists, legal observers. And, and ever since then, he's denied responsibility. So it's quite remarkable to me to see someone like that on this type of a panel when he seems to be exemplifying some of the things that's trying to change. And then, and then lastly, I thank you for your time. I just, you know, I know Mr. Harrison has a lot of respect, but I kind of look at where he was in the New Orleans Police Department. It seems to me that he left New Orleans right when they were getting to the hard stuff, like our monitored, monitoring team was talking about tonight, that it's, you know, kind of easy to rewrite training policies and things like that. But the hard part is, you know, making that stuff work. And it kind of troubles me that he kind of went out of there before even getting to the hard stuff. And now is, you know, flying around the country and talking, making money and speaking about how great things are going here. But I don't know, I just don't see that. So those are kind of my concerns. I really appreciate the time from the council.
No, we really appreciate your civic engagement. We ask that you please continue to tune in not only to these quarterly meetings, to other meetings of the city council. Ultimately, you're our eyes and our ears and we're here to represent you and all the other constituents' concerns. At this point, before we conclude, are there any other thoughts, questions or concerns from any other members of the body? Hearing and seeing none, I'll work with the consent monitoring team offline to ensure that this technical issue never happens on their end. Again, just for the record, spoke to them after they abruptly disconnected. And the reason that they provided was that at the law firm that they are located at, the IT department there only had them in for 8:30 and turned them off right at the end of their testimony or our questionings to them. So we'll work on that in the future. A lot of times, these hearings, there is no end time. We don't know if we're going to have 100 constituents show up or we're going to have one. But the reality is, we're all here to listen and to ensure that we provide the most transparent process for the folks that elected us and the taxpayers who are ultimately paying for the federal consent decree to monitor our Baltimore Police Department. With that, thank you all for joining and we look forward to seeing the feedback from today's discussion. Good night. Love you, Baltimore.